Okay, so help me here.
Yes.
Engine braking, jake braking, that's fine, that's safe.
Yeah, we went to Atlanta, which is a long way.
What's that say?
Just listening.
Okay, so that's a nothing.
So, you know, that's kind of rough. Otherwise, we did all right. Sure, do whatever.
So that's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty easy. We went to Atlanta back then.
These two, and then she's nothing.
Yeah. How was it?
Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is legislative prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Matson, you have the floor.
Would you stand as able to join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord, Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance. The City Council of Sedalia, mayor administrators, board members, and staff meet to hear about, discuss, question, and vote, and make decisions for the betterment of our community. We are grateful for their service and dedication to our citizens. We welcome two new members this evening, Lee Scribner and Michelle Franklin, joining the City Council. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our first responders who are 24/7 to serve and protect us often at their own peril, as the courts we know so recently. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, with which so many thousands have fought and died to create and preserve for these 250 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our military and civilians serving this great country today here and throughout the world. Keep them safe and bring them home safely. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. In all this, we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
And Franklin.
Okay, first item on our agenda is approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated April 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion and second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving along to the roll call of standing committees. Up first, we have Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
Number one, we have one item, is approval of UV supplies southeast and central wastewater treatment plants, Trojan Technology, for $64,814.20.
Okay, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-85.
Bill Number 2025-85, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of UV system supplies for the southeast and central wastewater treatment plants.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-85, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of UV system supplies for the southeast and central wastewater treatment plants.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
We have seven yes.
Thank you, Chairwoman Franklin. Up next, we have public safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
Number one is the acceptance of a bid for a special response vehicle for the police department from Terradyne Armored Vehicles at $307,930.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-86.
Bill Number 2025-86, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a special response vehicle for the state police department.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Part of the, just a point of information for interim city administrator work, $50,000 of this is coming from a unrestricted donation, or restricted donation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-86, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the purchase of a special response vehicle for the state police department.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes.
Item number two is Jake braking regulations.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-87.
Bill Number 2025-87, adornance of the city of Sedalia amending the city code regarding prohibited jake braking.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor?
I understand that this is only, that MoDOT has to have approval of this if it's on a highway.
MoDOT has to approve the signs. So, we actually had a ordinance in place that was passed back in 2000, 2001, that ran through 2016, in that the language was a little different than what's in this bill, but we were able to track down the modified language that MoDOT has approved to include in this bill. So, they've reviewed that, and that's all right as far as the language.
So, we don't have to do anything else with them put the signs up?
Yeah, we would need to go ahead and seek a permit from MoDOT to put the signs up, but as far as enacting the ordinance, we don't.
65 and 50.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. Anyone else?
I'd like to add, this is in a response to a lot of complaints I got from residents while I was out campaigning. Many people mentioned the noise and just the nuisance of the engine braking, especially on Broadway, so that's why we're here.
Yeah, and the difference too in those two bills, the one that was repealed back in 2016, if you look at it, the one that they had back in 2016, it was just a blanket ban on jake braking. This one, it says that if you're using a muffled jake brake, or one with a muffler, or an aftermarket muffler, whether it be aftermarket or OEM, that is okay, but it's the ones where they don't have that muffler installed, and that's where they're, they're, cracks down on those, so. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-87, an ordinance of the city of Sedalia amending the city code regarding prohibited jake braking.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes, and thank you, Chairman Scribner. Up next, we have community development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. First, I would please like to call Robin Balkia to give a presentation. She is the communications coordinator for Helping Hands. This is good, this is good, Bill. I want to thank the council for the ability to present here this evening about Sedalia Community Helping Hands and the work that we do. In the creation of the organization, we came up with this mission statement to describe what we do, and I want to add that not only do we work with, that we only work with homeowners, if a renter contacts us about a repair, we refer them to the actual property owner. Our board is diverse and dedicated, and they volunteer their time to make this organization successful. We meet once a month for a formal board meeting, but we also meet most Friday mornings to discuss the work projects for the following day. These are the initial two criteria used to determine whether a homeowner qualifies for our services. When a homeowner contacts us, we have a board member go by and take a look at the work that's needed to be done, and drop off a project request form. Once the form is returned, the board discusses the project, and it's added to the list if it's something that falls within the scope of what we do. At any given time in the year, we have a list of over 20 homeowners waiting for our attention to their projects. We prioritize projects based on whether they've received a citation from the city or a notice to appear in court, then we try to get additional projects done as we have time. Although Helping Hands began in November 2022, as a couple of volunteers helping homeowners once a month, it wasn't until 2023 when we started working every Saturday morning, having local media coverage, and now Facebook pages helped get the word out in the community about who we are and what we do. Last year, Helping Hands partnered with the Sedalia Pettis County United Way for their Day of Action held in June. They had more volunteers than they had projects, so they offered some volunteers for us to help with our projects, and with that additional assistance, we were able to coat, put a coat of paint on five homes that day. We also get referrals throughout the year from United Way and other community resources. We've worked with West Central Independent Living Solutions, or Wills, as most people know them, who will provide the materials for a wheelchair ramp to be built for their clients. Having us do the labor avoids them having to pay someone to do that, and thus that saves them money that can be used towards materials for other ramps. We also build and repair wheelchair ramps for homeowners as needed, whether they're a Wills client or not, and this is just some of the projects that we've done. In the past 14 months, we've been able to assist 53 homeowners with their repairs. Because we only work 9:00 AM to noon on Saturdays, many projects take multiple Saturdays to complete. There are some projects that are beyond the scope of what we're able to manage due to the nature of the project. These would include someone needing their lawn mowed every week throughout the summer, or a project that involves interior cosmetic issues. We also turn away project requests if the home is located outside of the city limits, since we were created to address specifically the city code enforcement issues. Our projects have included things from yard and fence cleanup, to roofs and everything in between for the homeowners. One of the most common needs is gutters. Thankfully, Wayne Rhodes has graciously allowed us to use his gutter making machines so we can custom make gutters for homeowners, and along with installing the new gutters, we also do the fascia and soffit work. This is our contact information. We also have business cards and brochures. I think everyone should have a brochure at their spot. As noted in our presentation, Sedalia Community Helping Hands was created to help low-income elderly and disabled homeowners with repairs to address city code violations, in an effort to allow them to stay in their homes. As we know, homeowners who do not have the ability to take care of their home repairs tend to let them go to the point where they may receive one or more city code violation notices, and if the repairs are not taken care of, they would receive a notice to appear in court, which also sometimes goes unaddressed. As a result, some of the homeowners find themselves incurring fines that they're unable to pay, the unpaid fines fees are assessed as a tax against the property, and in some cases, properties end up in the hands of the city due to the unpaid tax. If not for Sedalia Community Helping Hands, some homeowners would have to undergo that process. We strive to help homeowners who meet our criteria with these repairs, and thus allow them to keep their home. Because most of our work is performed by volunteers, we're able to keep our operating expenses low. However, the cost of materials is a large expense that so far we've been able to manage through donations of building materials from local individuals and businesses, as well as monetary donations. But we also recognize the cost of building materials that they're continuing to rise, and as a nonprofit, we strive to be mindful of how funds are spent. One ongoing cost we incur is the expense of building permit fees, as well as dumpster fees, and the cost of disposing the contents of the dumpsters. So, I'm here on behalf of Sedalia Community Helping Hands this evening to respectfully request the city permit fees, dumpster fees, and disposal fees be waived for all or some of our work projects. This would help our nonprofit organization reduce our costs and allow the financial donations we receive to be used directly for materials necessary for these homeowner projects. Sedalia Community Helping Hands thanks the council in advance for their thoughtful consideration to this request. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Robin.
Robin, can you put the phone number back up there? I didn't get it all down. Sorry.
I don't know, can I?
I'll get it.
Matt's going to take care of that. It's on the brochure that you have as well. It's on the back of the brochure. You're okay, Matt.
Okay.
Does the council have any other points of information they'd like from Robin? Thank you, Robin.
Thanks, Robin. So, to help continue Sedalia Community Helping Hands efforts, staff and the mayor are proposing two resolutions to provide targeted support within the designated 353 redevelopment area. The first resolution authorizes the waiver of up to $600 in city imposed container rental and landfill tipping fees during the fiscal year 2025 to 2026. This waiver supports cleanup and abatement projects assisting vulnerable residents with property maintenance and compliance. To qualify, projects must occur within the designated redevelopment area, and all container requests must be submitted at least one week in advance. The second resolution authorizes the waiver of building permit fees up to $4,000 for eligible products during the 2025 and 2026 calendar years, with the resolution taking effect immediately upon passage and remaining valid through April 6th, 2026.
All right, call for the reading of the first resolution in relation to this matter.
Resolution 2130, a resolution authorizing the waiver of container rental and landfill fees for Sedalia Community Helping Hands during fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the second resolution in relation to this matter.
Resolution 2131, a resolution of the City Council of City of Sedalia, Missouri waiving permit fees for Sedalia Community Helping Hands for projects located within the 353 redevelopment area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion pass. All right, next item on our agenda is the appointments. Call for the reading of the appointments.
To members of the City Council, from Mayor Andrew Dawson, regarding new appointment and reappointments to Sedalia Redevelopment Corporation Board of Directors. New appointment, Tina Bogus replacing Chris Marshall for a two-year term expiring November 2027, and reappointments, Reagan Foster, one-year term expiring October 2026, Lucas Richardson, two-year term expiring November 2027, and Dr. Todd Fraley, two-year term expiring November 2027.
I have a motion to approve and block. I have that, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the appointments?
Uh, Mayor, uh, did they say Lucas Richardson and Todd Fraley was, terms expired '26? I thought they said '27.
No, it's '27. That's what's on the agenda, Bob.
It says '26 on the papers, though.
It says one year.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And now, we'll move on to the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have two new licenses and two renewals tonight. New licenses for Christie and Kevin Long doing businesses, Wildlife Ridge Winery at 34751 Miller Road, Smithton, Missouri, for a special event for the Baulkell Barnes Wedding at the Foundry, 324, from 8:00 PM to 11:59 PM, and then Paige Shear doing business as a local tap, 700 South Ohio, special event for Jaeger Cycle Sales Bike Night at 3001 South Limit, and then renewals for Lancy Ulrich doing business as Hampton Inn, Sedalia, 3909 West 9th for Liquor by the Drink, and Garrett Volker doing business as Volker's Eatery and Pub at 1021 South Limit for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales.
I have a motion to approve and block.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and block in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now, we move on to the miscellaneous items from the City Council or interim city administrator. Does anyone have anything? Nobody? All right, moving on to the next item. Next on our agenda is the good and welfare portion of the meeting. This is the time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address their city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, and agenda item you wish to address. Comments must be related to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on a non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name, address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum, and all remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint against that employee, you may do so through writing through the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the view of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be reported as part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the decorum and for your continued participation in the civic life of our city. At this time, we'll begin calling forward those who've signed up to speak. City Clerk Myers, here we have.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we do have two people that have signed up to speak on matters relevant to tonight's agenda, the first one being Robert Kinzer.
Kenner, sorry.
You asked the ordinance for engine braking.
You want to come to the microphone, sir.
You're fine, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenner, you now have the floor. If you could please state your name and address, and you'll be allotted three minutes.
My name is Robert Kenner, Jr. I was, I live at 703 West 7th Street. I was here to speak in favor of the ordinance on engine braking. Since you guys passed it, I really have nothing left to say.
All right, very good.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Kenner.
And the next one, Jeff Wyman.
Jeff Wyman, please step to the microphone, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Jeff Wyman at 711 West Broadway, and I also was here for the braking, and thank you, councilmen, councilwomen, for passing that ordinance. We live on Broadway and Grand for the last eight years, and the noise is awful. I would recommend, instead of a fine, you use lethal injection maybe is. Too far? Okay. But, yeah, thank you, because it's, it is awful. I appreciate you guys passing that.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman.
Okay, then, next, Mr. Mayor, we did have three other people that also signed to speak. However, the subject they were wanting to speak on were not subject on tonight's agenda, and just to remind everybody, per ordinance number 1225, that was passed by the City Council on April 21st, 2025, persons wanting to comment on a non-agenda topic must make a formal written request to the city clerk's office at least two business days prior to the meeting, and for this particular meeting, those requests would have needed to be received in the clerk's office by 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 1st.
All right, thank you, city clerk. I will now go ahead and entertain a motion and second to move to closed-door session.
To move to closed-door session.
I have a motion and second.
I've made a request a week ago to.
You must remain silent while the meeting is in session. Speaking or shouting from the gallery is disruptive and not permitted. This is your warning, please stop immediately. All right, I have a motion and second that are on the floor. Do I have any council discussion regarding the motion and second to move to closed-door session? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
It's like they say, just tell Pat to find out if we do that.
I'm sorry for that.
Don't worry, we got attending enough. Decades of work.
Decades. Thank you, that's awesome.
Well, in the council meeting.
What's the matter?
You and me and a chief of police and fire chiefs, and Matt maybe, and there's only like.
I think Payne probably would help me right now.
Chris, are we back live? Anybody? You open the session. All right, very good. Do I have a motion and second to return to the opening meeting?
Motion open.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yeah.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Who is? I mean Franklin.
Yes.
All right, we have three ordinances for consideration. We'll call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-88.
Bill Number 2025-88, an ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 914 East 5th Street from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to David Kilmer.
Second reading.
I have a motion and second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-88, an ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 914 East 5th Street from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to David Kilmer.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion and second for the final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion passes. Now, a call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-89.
Bill Number 2025-89, an ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property